And that was immediate silence. We now call this meeting to order. If we could please pay attention to Councilmember Cohen for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise if you are able.
Thank you, Mayor. Please welcome Bullet Bob Giffen, as he came to be known during his Navy days, when he successfully hit the ocean 100% of the time in his 45 pistol qualifications. Was that off the edge of the boat into the ocean?
Couldn't miss.
As you can see, Bob is a man of many talents. He once threw the ball over the backstop from his shortstop position, trying to throw out a runner, trying to score from third. Discovering that baseball might not be his calling, he entered law enforcement where responding to a drugstore burglar alarm, he locked himself out of his patrol car while leaving his emergency red lights on for all to see. After such experiences, he retired by the grace of God and entered the clergy, where during his first wedding ceremony, he left the entire congregation standing up after the bride enters, standing for the whole ceremony. So, without further ado, Pastor Bob is one of my Grace Point pastors, and he's here to pray for us, so hold on to your seats. This may be an invocation to remember. Pastor Bob.
Thank you, Council. Well, it is a privilege and an honor to pray with you and for you. Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight, and we ask, in the way of David, a leader, King David, a leader after your own heart, who in Psalm 25 asked for three things. He said, "Lord, teach me; Lord, guide me; Lord, show me." And I believe it appropriate, Lord, to echo that prayer for these leaders here this evening. I pray, Lord, that you would give them a teachable spirit, Lord. I pray that you would show them what your good and pleasing and perfect will is, and that you would guide them, Father, in the decisions that they make on behalf of our wonderful city. Lord, I pray that those decisions would glorify you. I ask for your protection upon them as they lead, and I thank you for them. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob.
Now we move on to the proclamation portion of the evening. We have three proclamations tonight, and we're first going to start with the YWCA and our friends that are here to talk about having a week without violence. So, as Mayor of the City of Topeka, one of the distinct pleasures that I have had in the last two years has been to be the person supporting the mayor's domestic task force violence. Oh, my gosh. Task Force for Domestic Violence. And it's been a wonderful experience to bring together everybody to the table. So, we have the DA's office, we have the Sheriff's Department, we have the YWCA, Family Peace Initiative, we have the hospitals. We have so many people that every single day interact with one way or another with our victims of domestic abuse. And one of the things that we are trying to do as a community is figure out a way that we can all understand, A, why that happens, B, provide support not only to the victims, but also to the perpetrators. Because a lot of times, what we have learned is that the perpetrators had trauma of their own that they really have not been able to deal with. And we are very big advocates on ensuring that there is support, because we believe in the value and the wholeness of every single individual. And most importantly, that through the work that we do, we start creating conversations in our community about how difficult it is for victims to maybe move away from those circumstances. Because a lot of people don't understand the cycle of abuse. And as a survivor, I can tell you, it's not easy, and obviously, it's not just for weak people that go through those situations. It happens. It happens at every socioeconomic level, and it happens in many circumstances. So, it is with great pride that we talk about Domestic Awareness Month, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It says, "Whereas domestic violence is a widespread preventable public health problem impacting all demographics of Topecans and Topeka communities, and whereas relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically, many are tarnished by one person's entitlement to power and control over the other, resulting in violence and fear. Domestic violence abusers are violent and cause fear in their victims by violating their individual privacy, dignity, security, and humanity, with their intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, and physical coercion and control and abuse. We, as the governing body of Topeka, recognize that this violence is inconsistent with Topeka values, and it cannot be tolerated. Now therefore, I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month." Kathleen, could you please say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say that this is a very special time of year for us, the month of October. When we are bringing attention to this issue, we are holding space for the victims and the survivors, and we're giving them the opportunity to be heard and to be seen and to be supported. But we're also giving community space to be able to talk about this very important issue in our community. And I'm going to pass the microphone over to Luca Wang, who is with the Kansas Coalition on Domestic Violence.
Yeah, thank you guys for having us. We're here to increase awareness about domestic violence and how important it is for all of Kansas and the Topeka community. We're for, and as I know all of you all are also for, safe communities, and it takes us all to create a safe environment for everybody.
Sure, thank you. And hi, I'm Cam. I'm the Public Education Coordinator at the YWCA Center for Safety and Empowerment. Our theme this year for Domestic Violence Awareness Month is Gender Justice is Social Justice, as you can see on this fascinating card, that has a list of our events for the Week Without Violence, which is an effort that the YWCA nationally does to bring awareness across the country, and especially in our community. We do it the best. Sorry, YWCA, no, just kidding. But we're hosting a series of events that raise awareness and provide education, including an event on Thursday, October 17th, for any football fans, football fans? Football? Yes, yes. At Iron Rail Brewing, we'll be having a pregame panel discussion about the NFL and domestic violence called Still a Fan, and how we navigate the complicated issue of enjoying things that often have a complicated history with relationship violence. So, please join us at 6:00 PM on October 17th. We'll leave a couple of these here, but if you want more for yourself or your establishment, your business, your agency, please drop by our office or reach out to us, and we can bring you some. And we'd love to see you there, supporting all of our various events, including on Friday, every year, we have the March and Rally. We start at the south steps of the Capitol in March. Well, we will be hearing from speakers, including Kathleen, Kathy Ray from Kansas Coalition Against Sexual and Domestic Violence, and the governor herself, a celebrity in the House, who will be speaking about domestic violence in our communities before we march over to the YWCA office. If you've never been, we'd love to have you, and, you know, hand out a couple free hot dogs, thanks to the Sheriff's Department, and have a good time rallying together in support of safer communities, safer families, and healthy relationships. So, thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commission.
This is another fun one for me, soft place in my heart. If we could have our friends from the Home Builders Association just join us. We are celebrating Careers in Construction Month as well. So, this proclamation reads, "Whereas Careers in Construction Month is an annual month designated to help increase public awareness of the opportunities available in construction trades profession, and whereas during this month, employers, associations, and schools are encouraged to conduct fairs, panel discussions, and local community events to inform students of the vast employment opportunities in construction. Whereas the construction industry is one of our nation's largest industries, employing more than 5 million individuals in the U.S. Whereas the National Association of Home Builders and the Topeka Area Building Association Student Chapter Program is dedicated to enriching the educational experience for students by offering them firsthand exposure to the real world of building industry through mentorship, educational programming, and networking opportunities. Therefore, I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Career in Construction Month." So, this one is also very dear to my heart. I used to work at Habitat for Humanity, so one of my favorite places was to be on top of a roof putting shingles. You get to see everything happen from up there. You get a good sun time as well. But I think that as a country, one of the things that we have done is that we have stopped talking to our kids about trades. And it's extremely important in the time in which everything is getting programmatically more automated. And, you know, college careers may not be the fit for everybody. That is not a bad thing. We need a little bit of everything in our communities, and we absolutely need a lot more construction professionals. A huge call to women as well. There is nothing more scintillating than working with wires, and then just flipping that switch and see if it works. So, enjoy the fun, and we just, Dawn, would you like to say a few words?
I'm Katie, not Dawn. That's all right, though. I would just like to thank you personally. This means a lot to all of us at the Building Association here in town. We have recently started a student chapter to reach some of the students in our local areas, who, like you said, a four-year college is not for everybody. I know my, three of my four children, it's not for them. So, I'm hoping that one of them, one here, might go to college, but we'll see. And if not, there's a trade waiting for her. We are reaching out to the kids. We're working with T-Calc quite a bit here in town, and we're hoping to get a festival of sorts to let these students come and meet some of our construction companies here in town, and just see if they can find a fit for them.
And for those of you that may not know this, doctors make good money, but plumbers, $75 to $100 an hour. Think about that.
Thank you very much.
Last but not least, we should have Councilwoman Ortiz, please join us for this one. Fire Prevention Week, this is your thing. She's like, "Come on, come on, chief." So, before I say anything about this proclamation, I want to give the Florida Councilwoman Ortiz a chance she could do her annual admonishment to everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my favorite month, even though we only get two meetings. Don't know how that happened. But I will let Mr. Martin kind of tell us what we're doing this month.
Thank you for putting me on the spot. Fire Prevention Month is one of my favorite months as well. Prevention is the heart of what the fire department does. The best fought fire is one that never occurs. So, we're going to be out in the community this year. We were at Washburn University today, doing some training. We're trying to get out and get with the public and make sure everybody understands how they can be safe, and we're just so happy to get the proclamation, to get everybody aware of it, and hopefully, we can get out there and save some lives.
So, you're not going to tell people what they need to do?
They need to get smoke detectors. How many of you, and I want you to be honest, do not have smoke detectors? Raise your hand. That's not true. Everybody out there does not have a smoke detector. Who does not have a smoke detector in the chambers? Raise your hand. Don't be embarrassed. Raise your hand. Raise your hand. Perkins, you have one? Two? Okay. Batteries? Matt, you have them? We've been out there. I will call you out.
They're over seven to 10 years old. They need to be replaced. And the fire department will do that for three.
There you go. So, the proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and while our homes are locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, these fire emergencies can happen anywhere. And whereas fires in the City of Topeka have killed 13 people in the last five years, and the Topeka Fire Department has responded to over 1,000 structured fires in the last five years. Whereas the Topeka Fire Department, with support of the American Red Cross, installs free," again, "free," smoke alarms and inspects hundreds of commercial structures annually in order to keep our citizens safe. And whereas the City of Topeka firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires and injuries through prevention, protection, community risk reduction projects, and education, therefore, I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, and Councilwoman Sylvia Ortiz, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th to the 12th of 2019 as Fire Prevention Week.
Yes, just one last word. This is Mike's last Fire Prevention Week. He retires at the end of this year, and I want him to have the last word. So, the slogan this year is, "Not every hero wears a cape. Plan and practice your escape." Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service. And before we have proclamations, they're not expecting this, but could I have PAC One come up here before they leave? Yeah, look at their faces. So, if you guys noticed, when I came in, I'm typically here like 30 minutes early, but I came in like five minutes ahead of time. And it's because I had the distinct pleasure of meeting some outstanding young men in our community. I want to introduce you all to the PAC One from Chez and Councilman Emerson. These are future constituents of yours. And, yes, you could come with us and get a picture. So, these young men took the initiative to call the mayor's office, and they are working on just some of the skills in the community, and this was one of those important ones of getting in contact with a public official. I have had the privilege of seeing Mr. Carter and Mr. Peter Vincent grow up, so it was a delight to bring them into the office. They asked some really good questions, asked about the challenges of running for political office. You should talk to Councilman Cohen, he's in the middle of that right now. And Councilman Emerson as well is doing that. And they had some really good questions with regards to their community. So, I wanted to recognize these young leaders, because they took some significant time of their day just to spend some time with our office, not just to come and sit down and just listen to us talk. So, please recognize our leaders, and I wish them the best of luck. I say, stay in Topeka. We had the conversation, and they're all staying in the city. So, let's recognize them. Before we proceed with the meeting, I want to let everybody know, we have a long one tonight. So, with that, there's, for everybody on the bench, there has been some food. So, if you see any of our council members having some food, we're still humans. Have some compassion with us. We're going to be here for a while. So, that being said, we proceed with the roll call. Oh, presentations, my bad. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Sarah Jones will present on the Topeka Way to Work program. We have a very good program this year, and she has some information that will explain in more detail what they did over this last summer. Sarah?
Thank you for having me, everyone. My name is Sarah Jones. I've worked for the City of Topeka in Human Resources for a little over two and a half years, but this year was my first year as the program coordinator for the Topeka Way to Work program. The Topeka Way to Work program was initiated by the governing body and has grown and transformed throughout the years. It is a summer employment program that is offered to Shawnee County residents, high school residents, and we offer career development, behind-the-scenes tours, on-the-job training, and we focus on areas like communication, career readiness, and financial literacy. Our 2019 program began on June 3rd and ended on July 25th. The interns worked half-days Monday through Wednesday, and Thursday afternoons, they did professional development with me. This year, we received 176 applications, conducted 81 interviews, and hired 16 interns. These interns were placed in 11 different departments throughout the city, and they participated in six different professional development days. Here are some specific demographics on the interns we hired this year. We focused a lot more on recruiting and specifically, social media. We thought that would be a better advantage reaching this generation, and it proved successful. We had at least 94 applicants indicate on their application that they heard about the program through social media. Having a large number of applicants was very beneficial as well, because it gave us the opportunity to employ a very diverse group of teens from the Shawnee County High Schools. Once the program began, we spent a lot of time talking about why the program exists and all the benefits it provides. I emphasize how working for the city gives you the opportunity to give back to the community. You gain a sense of pride in the city, because you see things from a different point of view, and you are invested in it. You want the city to succeed. We also discussed why it's important to give back to the community that we live in. We decided to start the 2019 program off on a positive note, which was a random act of kindness. We came up with the idea to decorate envelopes, and then we filled them with money and put them all over the city, in parks, in community centers, different buildings that people worked in. We just wanted to start a good, positive momentum for this year, so that was a good idea from some of the teens that we did. We realized it only takes one person and one act of kindness to inspire others and create change. When it came to their day-to-day tasks, some of the interns worked in our larger departments and moved between divisions and supervisors, so each day was different. Other interns got to master skills in their specialized departments. They got to learn how to be comfortable on the phones, how to interview and write articles. They audited files. They attended meetings and dictated notes. Another big aspect of the program was our professional development days. These were very beneficial, something that they always looked forward to. Our first professional development trip was to the zoo. The interns had the opportunity to speak to the veterinarian, to an animal care supervisor, and also to the conservation and education specialists that we have at the zoo. Each of the city employees talked to the interns about the education experience required to be in those positions, why they do it. They got to hear fun stories and experiences with their animals. And by the end of the day, we got to go to the tiger exhibit and get a little behind-the-scenes tours where they feed them and where they do some of the training. So, that was pretty cool. The second week was a field trip to the water plant for a tour. The plant operations director took us around and gave the interns a step-by-step process of how we bring the water in from the river, we clean it, and eventually distribute it out to the city. I don't think the interns had any idea of the process, how extensive it was, so they were very interested in it. At the end, we got to even go into the lab, and they got to take their own samples and see what needed to be changed with the water to get to the desired state, so they enjoyed the hands-on experience as well. The last field trip we had was the Armory, and we worked with the recruiting sergeant that's over there right now. He gave them a tour, and they even took the tests that we give to police applicants coming into the department when they are interested in being a police officer. They got to do a question-and-answer session where they just were very honest with the police officers and asked everything they wanted to know, and see the pros and cons of working for the police department, and actually got a very thorough history of the police department, which was interesting as well. The rest of the professional development days we did was mostly focused on self-development. The first one was a financial literacy training. We talked about the importance of staying on top of your finances with a game called The Payoff. This was an immersive game where they each played a role in a scenario. They were forced to make decisions like whether to purchase insurance, how to deal with diversity, and when to invest. They had to choose between a lot of wants and needs, and then they saw the results of their decisions. Each decision would raise or lower their score. So, by the end, they were able to talk about what decisions benefited them and what they would change if they could do it again. Next, we brought in a professor that teaches different communication courses. She walked them through scenarios and helped them determine the best way to act and react based on different situations, like what would be appropriate when you're with your friends versus when you're at school or work. Most importantly, we discussed how important effective communication is when it comes to making a positive lasting impression. We also brought in a speaker who coached them on their strengths and the best way to utilize them moving forward. I thought it was important to focus on some of the positive things they have going, instead of constantly going back to ways they can improve. Research says that individuals who use their strengths every day are six times more likely to be engaged in their work, and three times more likely to say they have an excellent quality of life. The best part was, we were able to put together a team map that showed all of their skills as a group, and how we could build off of each other. The last professional development day was about solving some common problems they may have at school or work. They learned the importance of setting their goals, that they can control, and the benefit of working hard and demonstrating their worth. The last week of the program, I sent a survey out to all of them, talking about, I wanted to get their responses about their experience over the summer, what they would change, what they would recommend for next year. I received a lot of great feedback. Some of their responses were that the program gave them the opportunity to learn a lot of information on careers they never thought they would be interested in until we placed them there. They thought it was fun, educational, it made them feel like they were a part of something bigger, and that opportunities like this don't come along every day, so they were grateful for the experience. Based on the feedback from my TWTW participants, from the community, different departments, I believe the program is a very valuable tool in introducing teens to local government employment opportunities. I'm grateful that this program is budgeted for 2020, giving us the opportunity to continue to employ more teens in the community and reach as many as we can. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Does the body have any comments or questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Can you repeat the part that you said is very valuable, that little paragraph? Can you read that so we can hear that again?
Yeah.
Say it again.
Yes. Sorry, I got a moment out of order. I believe the program is a valuable tool in introducing teens to local government employment opportunities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional comments or questions? Thank you for the work and for the development opportunities that the students had. I hope that all of those students can eventually see themselves working with us, and that we, again, get them to stay here in our community.
Yes, me too.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
There are no further presentations. At this point in time, we move to the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Here. Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
President.
Cohen?
Here.
Lesser?
Here.
We now move on to Section 4 Appointments. The mayor has no vote in this area. If the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Joseph Ledbetter to the Topeka Metropolitan Transit Board for an unexpired term ending September 16, 2023. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of James Kopp to the Topeka Planning Commission for a term ending September 30, 2022. C is an advisory council appointment of Annette Caraway to the City of Topeka Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Advisory Council for a term ending September 30, 2021. And D is an advisory council appointment of Kim Dietrich to the City of Topeka Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Advisory Council for a term ending September 30, 2021.
We have heard the motion. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion approved.
Do we have, we have a motion for approval by Councilman Cohen? We have a second by Councilmember Jensen. Additional comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We have some of the members of these councils, this committee's here. If you could please rise so that you could be recognized. We do have Kim. Oh, Kim, thank you for rising, and Mr. Joseph Ledbetter. Thank you so much for your service to our community. We appreciate your time and effort invested in us. We now move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk would read, item A.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving city expenditures through the period of August 3 through August 30, 2019, and enumerating said expenditures therein. B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing the initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire easements for the reconstruction of Southwest 10th Avenue from Fair Lawn to Wanamakers, who include utility improvements. C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing the initiation of litigation against the manufacturers of prescription opioids and those in the chain of distribution. D are minutes of the regular meeting of September 17, 2019, and there are no applications.
We have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Emerson. We have a second by Councilman Jensen. Additional comments or questions with any of the items in the consent? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I do have a question. I was looking over the expenditures, and I see that there's a large number for child support. Do we not just lump them in one sum and send it over? Is it because we take out a certain checks? Why is that? Why is that?
Councilwoman Ortiz, I'm not sure on the answer to that. I haven't looked into that.
Okay. Can you give me that answer, please?
Yes.
Because it's, there's just several that they take out, and I'm just kind of curious if it's per case, and that's why we have to do it.
I'll find out and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Additional comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move into the action items for tonight. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
A is a request to refer discussion and review of TMC Chapters 920 Discrimination and 925 Fair Housing to the Council Policy and Finance Committee in accordance with Section 8.5A1 of the Governing Body Rules and Procedures.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we bring this before you to look at referring it to the committee. This item requires an extensive discussion to determine whether or not it's something that we want to make a change. It's a policy change, and so therefore recommending that it go to the committee in order to be vetted and allow individuals to make testimony in order to be able to determine whether it's something and what form that change might look like if we were to decide to make the change.
Before we go any further, if I could ask Mr. Will Nager to make a presentation to the body with regards to how this got initiated? That way, the body at least knows what the impetus of this was. Mr. Nager?
Hi, my name is William Nager. I'm one of the commissioners on the Human Relations Commission. Recently, a few different individuals approached me as a member of that commission, wondering if we could make a move on this policy. There is a sense that adjusting the policy and including gender identity and sexuality into the pre-existing nondiscrimination ordinance would fit in with the goals of the Human Relations Commission, reaching out to different communities and making sure that the city is cooperating and has good relationships between different groups, as well as it's the right thing to do. And so, the commission discussed it as an item and decided that it is in support of this change. I do know that for some of you, you are familiar with the fact that it is, there was an ordinance passed regarding city employees. This would be taking a next step with that, so this, it's not already covered. That did not cover what this would. This would extend that same protection that city employees already have to residents of Topeka and their employment rights, as well as extending to housing rights.
So, do we have any questions for Mr. Nager, or? Councilwoman Ortiz.
So, what I'm hearing is this is just going to be reprimanded to the Public Health and, or Public?
Correct.
Okay, to that committee, right? That's what this vote is?
Yes.
Okay.
For further discussion, to take a look at the current policies that we have, so that that committee could then sit down and have a discussion, to have a better understanding and a conversation with the Human Relations Commission, and then that body would make a recommendation to this body.
Okay.
Councilman Jensen.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Is that a second, just for the sake of discussion? Okay, so we have a second by Deputy Mayor Clear for the sake of discussion. Councilwoman Hiller.
Do you have one more other comment?
Oh, well, but, yes.
I just wanted to.
No, no, yeah, we have two people, and Cheryl Richardson as well.
I just wanted, I'm sorry. Thank you. I was a little confused by what was in our agenda packet, in terms of what the intention was and what we would be referring to the committee. The motion that was just made was to refer, but we don't have any content in that motion. And so, if the motion's good enough, that's fine. I just wanted to, in reviewing all that I could figure out from the referral, certainly addressing those protected classes. When we did the personnel policies, the staff advised that we, that the Human Relations Commission was looking at definitions, is what they told us at the time, but, you know, reviewing, getting those classes that are protected in the city into that overall statement, I'm fine with. I was confused as to whether you were wanting to recommend recreating the staff department again, and I was not wanting this referral to be inferred as the council asking somebody to put together that.
The Human Relations Department?
Correct.
That, no, that, the first time I saw anything about that associated with this was whenever I looked at the agenda for tonight, so.
Okay, well, again, without that clarification, if all you're asking for is to deal with the definitions.
Yes.
That's not clear, or was not clear in what we had. There had also been some commentary in the text that the staff provided with the agenda about dealing with, they sent us copies of the current language that has to do with the city's retaliatory eviction ordinance, which got recodified into the fair housing section a couple of years ago and just needs to come back out. So, I was confused about that as well. Staff says they can either ping through the committee or they're just going to do it. And last, I don't know if there'd been discussion at the committee level. I have visited with the committee myself before, and Councilman Padilla and I have talked a little bit about the subject of just what the committee, whether this, what was coming forward was part of the committee wanting to have a stronger, more meaningful role in the city. And so, I was happy to have you relook at the roles of the commission itself, if that was part of what you were thinking about.
Recently, there has been discussion of what exactly the commission is and is not, and how that is somewhat ambiguous at times. And so, in regards to bringing this, or bringing attention to this issue, though, that was something that we discussed in the early summer, and as the commission just, first of all, decided that we were comfortable with using our position to bring attention to different issues that we thought were relevant to the commission's vision statement. And so, then, we first just decided that, yes, we were comfortable using our authority in that way, and then we talked about, all right, this specific issue, are we comfortable with? And we decided on both of those accounts that, yeah.
So, if I can clarify then, because I want to give, if we're going to defer something to, refer it to committee, I want the committee to be sure what we're asking them to do. You discuss then, you definitely want the committee, with you, I assume, to look at the definition section, the protected classes sections in 9.2.
Yes, we would like the, sending it to committee for that to be looked at.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you talked about the purposes of your commission and decided, you didn't have an issue with that right now?
Broader than?
Broader than getting those protected classes taken care of.
That's been an ongoing discussion, which hasn't finished at this point.
Okay, so you're not ready to have that go to the committee?
No, no.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify. So, with then, just to clarify the understanding of what referring it to the committee is, we're just talking about the review of 9.2.
And 9. something.
2.25.
Well, there was, but 2.5, the only thing that's in 2.5 right now is getting the retaliatory eviction ordinance out of it. There's nothing else in there.
I don't know if the numbers are mixed up, Councilwoman Hiller, but one's 9.20 and one's 9.25. 9.20 is, I believe, the one that Mr. Nager's speaking of, and 9.25 is the, what it's now called fair housing, I believe.
Yes, fair housing practice.
That's the part, that chapter needs to just be recodified and put in a separate place.
Right. 9.20.020 and 9.20.040 appear to be the sections that Mr. Nager is talking about.
I don't know the numbers specifically.
And I think that if I could help bring some illumination to this, I think the spirit, from what I've understood when I was approached by the committee, was the committee had talked about this, they felt it was important, and they wanted to understand what the proper vehicle was, and they felt like bringing it to the committee that does policy, so that the committee can have a discussion with regards to what they understand and then what the policy, a committee would look at as well, to see how it would all fit in of the things that we already have in place. It's as simple as that. They just want to talk about that specific policy to ensure that it makes it clear that there is no discrimination for individuals, specifically in the area of sexuality and gender preference. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that is, that is a much more narrow focus and one that would be clearer. I'm aware that the committee only has three months before we change, it's the end of the year as well, so, you know, was conscientious about scope of what we would be asking the committee to do. So, if the motion is clear enough to cover what we just discussed, then I'm fine with it.
So, before we go any further, we do have Ms. Cheryl Richardson that also wants to make statements on this issue. Thank you, Mr. Nager.
Thank you.
Cheryl Richardson? Is not present. So, at this point in time, do we have additional questions on this item? Okay, well, if there's no more questions or discussion on this item, we proceed by voting. A vote would remand this discussion to the policy committee.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B.
B is an ordinance introduced by Councilmember Sandra Clear concerning parking on non-paved surfaces in the city of Topeka Code Section 240, 130, 210, and 106120, and repealing original sections.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Governing Body, we bring back to you consideration of the parking, the residential parking of vehicles on residential property, excuse me. Tonight, we did make some changes based on the discussions that were held at the last meeting with Governing Body members. There were some changes that were made. Those are outlined in present and this change, and so, we feel like we made a couple of changes in areas that will make it clear to those that have to enforce it, and so, stand for any questions you may have regarding the ordinance.
Any questions? Discussion? Deputy Mayor.
To expand on this, we already have an ordinance that states this. The problem is, just like with all the laws that are made, someone either goes around it or, you know, tries to beat the rules, and then you have to come up with another one, and this is kind of what led to this. I've gotten emails and calls, some say mind your own business, it's my property, some say, wow, thank you, because this looks terrible in my neighborhood. So, I've gotten both, but we already have expectations of a property owner, the grass, you know, the painting of the house. I think this is just another expectation. If you're going to live in a community that you live with the community, if you don't like the rules, move out the country, out of the county, not the country. Move out, move out to the county. Yeah, don't move out the country. But I think this shows pride in the neighborhood, one easy way. I have a gravel driveway. You know, every time I take trash out, I stop and pull weed. I mean, they're just there, but if you don't get it, let it get out of hand, you know, sometimes I pay the neighbor kid two cents of weed to pull them. I don't think it's that difficult. I just think this is important as another step to help communities represent our city in the best way that it can. Thank you. Well, I don't want to move out of the country there, but we're trying to get, we're trying to get people in the city here, but anyway. Where I'm at, the streets are narrow, I've only got so many parking, and I have a lot of family. I'm not saying I do it every day that I park on the grass, but sometimes when we have family over, we have to park on the grass, because the streets are narrow, and so, I think if we pass this, we wouldn't be able to do that. Is that correct, Lisa?
That's correct, Pearl Luther, Easy Enforcement Person.
And I think, I think when the emails that we received, you know, at least from my district, I don't know if Mr. Henderson wants to chime in here, but, you know, that's what we're up against. That's totally what we're up against, is that our streets are so narrow. I can get, I think, five cars in my driveway. I have a back driveway that I'm working on, so I can get another two, that's seven. But I have four vehicles, and when my kids come, I mean, I think that's what they're saying, is that where do we park? You know, what do we do? We're not really trying to break the law, but that's just, that's just an issue. So, on any given holiday, we might have 20, 30 cars. That, you know, and I think, but I understand where you're coming from, Sandra. It doesn't look good, you know, to go, and some people can't afford to gravel or whatever, or pull up or whatever. I mean, I don't know what the solution is, but as for myself, I can't support it, because if I have, if I have company, there's nowhere for me to park. Go down 9th Street, it's narrow. Mr. Emerson came to my house. He went, he went in the ditch. He can tell you how narrow it is, you know.
It's a narrow street.
It's very narrow. You go down 9th Street, it's narrow, so you have, Golden is double, unless we're going to all park on Golden and walk two blocks over, but we don't tear up my grass, I'm not going to allow that, but I'm just saying, I think that's where we're coming from on that particular side of town.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Deputy Mayor.
I don't think that's what we're talking about. I think there's already ordinance. All we're doing is taking the blocks out, where they can put your cars on blocks, and the grass underneath, legal, if you can help me out with exactly what was changed. Wasn't that basically?
Councilmember Clear, are you talking about what was changed from last time we discussed it to now?
Well, no, from, we already have this ordinance.
Right.
So, it's already in effect. We're just changing, putting your, on blocks.
Right, because I think that was the initial complaint, was that cars were being parked on blocks.
Right.
So, we added a definition for park, or parking, and a definition for paved or gravelled area, just to make it clear what it was you could park on.
Right.
So, a surface, it doesn't have to be concrete, it can be gravel, but that there's, the car can be parked on that, and there's no overhang of the vehicle. It's not covering grass, it's got a border.
Right, so we're not making an ordinance, because it's already there. We're just changing it so the people that try and go around it, we're just trying to stop them from going around it until they go around it again.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
But didn't this include parking in front of the doorway? I thought there was a section in there that included that.
City Attorney?
I don't know that we added a section that dealt with that, Councilmember Ortiz.
No.
You took out the one that let disabled people park.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. And we added, there was a, I think the last time we talked about it, when Councilmember Lesser brought it up, there was an issue with the driveways. People were very upset because they thought that it couldn't park in your driveway.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
So, that's why we put the definition of driveway.
But still, this does affect, because, I know, I know what you're saying.
Okay, Councilwoman Padilla, to be followed by Councilwoman Hiller.
Quick question, as the recommendation to have the police department be the enforcement body of this ordinance, I think I can speak from experience, this isn't going to be a high priority. Anyway, it's not like police officers are going to be driving around looking Anyway, it's not like police officers are going to be driving around looking for parked cars on a holiday. There's that expectation that there will be more people visiting. I think this addresses the issue that I see a lot in my district, where people have made it a parking lot, and they've put two, three, four vehicles there, half of them aren't even in running condition, and it does detract from the neighborhood. And when we're trying to improve the image of the neighborhoods, not just the city, but the individual neighborhoods, block by block, you can tell where the care for that property ends and where it begins by how people have their property displayed for their neighbors. And it invites vermin, invites kids to climb around in those vehicles, they could get hurt, they could get locked in a trunk. There are a lot of other things that could happen with junked vehicles, and that's what I think a lot of this refers to. And I've seen campers out there that have become residences on front yards, and I think this is what this is trying to address, and I think that it's important that we move forward on it, and I would support it.
All right. So, we, I think we've had several discussions on this, but there is no motion yet before...
I had a comment.
Yes, Councilwoman Heller.
I just wanted to support the conversation that this is nothing new. I don't know, I'm typically not comfortable passing something that's not going to be enforced every day as it's written, but we did get a handout in response to Councilwoman Ortiz's question about commercial being covered, that included some language under "commercial" that said, if people are parking on a special occasion on grass, as long as it's, you know, a reasonable, I ran out of ink in my printer, so I don't have it with me, but that on occasion, whether it's a church or some commercial property, I'm not even sure it said it was limited to commercial, that people could park on the grass occasionally, as long as it was covered with grass, and that seemed to allow for those exceptions when people have company. The primary reason we have it, as I understand it, is because when people do that a lot, it ends up being a code compliance violation as well, because you get ruts, you get standing water, you get mud, and both for appearances and the health, those, those end up being code compliance violations anyway, hence, to some extent, the crossover. So, I agree with the mayor that it's unlikely, or Councilman Padilla, I guess, that they're not going to be running around on Sunday trying to see about your neighbors, but if it ends up that the cars are there all the time, or the ruts and mud occur, that's, that's where, between the two, it'll get picked up. So, I understand the mixed feelings, but I also am the one who asked about leaving the four to six inches in. It was interesting to read the handout that we got today, which actually talks about eight inches. I do hope that, what I know is lots of people in my neighborhood have rocks, they've rocked it for extra parking space, or even a driveway, but that guidance that four to six inches, which is more than one load of rock, it's amazing how much a parking space will soak up. I just hope that the staff will be consistent about, throughout the different departments, about giving people that guidance, so they can get in something that's going to be manageable for them. I understand your reason for leaving it out, but I, I did want to ask, though, I went back and looked through this, does it actually say that we're putting the police department in first position on enforcement? I thought it said it at one point. I know that they're listed first in terms of who can enforce. I guess to me, functionally, if it's not prohibited, I, it makes sense to me that code compliance would be in first position, because they're the ones who are working on stuff that's in people's yards.
City attorney.
Section 3.
You're going to answer it.
I am.
We added the police department in there, in addition to the property maintenance folks. I think that the issue has been that there's more compliance when a TPD officer issues the citation, so that's why it was added, so both folks will be able to enforce.
Okay. City manager.
Thank you. The other point that I'll make is that the decision to have law enforcement be in primary is that oftentimes, this particular issue occurs in the evening hours. Our code enforcement officers aren't out there in those evening hours. Therefore, having them available allows them, you know, people come home from work, park their car there, and that's when you can catch them available, to be able to tell them that they're violating the law. So, that's why I want the law enforcement folks to be in charge, primary with regards to this. Doesn't mean that a code enforcement officer won't also inform an individual that they're violating this law, but more than likely, when enforcement's needed, is when, in the evening hours, when code enforcement isn't working.
Thank you, city manager. We, I want to make sure that I follow protocol, so we don't have a motion, and we have two individuals signed up to speak. So, I would like to see if we could have a motion at least in a second, and then I could invite those individuals up. Council, deputy mayor makes a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion to amend the ordinance regulating parking on non-paved surfaces.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a second by Councilmember Padilla. So, at this point, before we have further discussion, I would like to invite to the podium Mr. Clark Trammell.
This subject is something that touches all of us. And the reason I signed up to speak to it is listening through this dialogue and watching what's going on in the neighborhoods that I'm walking at the moment. You see a lot of different things going on, and the conversation's been healthy. But I'd like to point out, if you step back and listen to this conversation, there are several different points that need to be addressed as you go through this. One that hasn't been discussed at this point, and I would like to hear an answer to it, as would the public, is Councilman Emerson said, why don't we have it be a permitted action? And the response was, we don't do that. Well, I'd like to know why we don't, if we can. I think that should be considered, because that gives your code enforcement the ability to get on the property and see if it's done correctly, whatever that is. Two, I think you can ask for exceptions, like Councilwoman Ortiz said, that there are times when people do park in a yard, not to be honorary or to detract from the neighborhood, and there should be acceptance of tolerance, that that can happen for no longer than 12 or 24 hours, whatever that period is. I think you should look at creating an acceptance. Three, I personally think, as a businessperson, picking up on what Councilwoman Heller said, that code enforcement should be primary. The police are always available to contact, to back up, or they can carry a responsibility when it turns dark, that can be understood. But the priority for clarity, is if this is an ordinance code violation, should stay in the lane with who's responsible for codes and enforcement of saying. Four, I don't like the idea of the police having to do this, because I want them catching criminals. I would prefer we find out what we need to do to effectively handle this issue by code enforcement. And then I noticed the way this is written, and I would make a suggestion to you, that it's written that parking of vehicles on non-paved surfaces, to parking of vehicles on residential property, you might want to consider, rather than narrowing or even limiting your options, of simply saying parking of vehicles on non-paved services and/or parking of vehicles on residential property. Why narrow your focus? Give yourself the benefit of being able to address any and every issue that's relative to gravel, parking, pavement, or whatever. But I would hope that you would address and think through this, because those moving parts all need to be tied together in whatever you decide to do. And since we're only inspecting these from the curb, and we can't go on the property unless we get permitting, I can tell you, there are several people in my neighborhood that don't have gravel under the vehicles, and are parking them on the side or on the yard. I don't like it. As Councilman Padilla said, we want to keep our neighborhoods attractive, to show we respect each other, and that we appreciate this community and how we live here. Has to do with valuation, it has to do with just building our city to become the beautiful place that it can be. So, please consider that. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Trey McPherson.
Madam Mayor, governing body, thank you for letting me speak this evening on this issue. Something I noticed in the proposed ordinance that concerned me a lot was the wording about the individuals who may be disabled. I, myself, for a very short time, was temporarily incapacitated to the point where, for three days out of the week, I was completely bedridden. I have a physical condition with my ankles called Tarzal Collision, which prevents me from standing up for long periods of time. At that time, I had been working at a Walmart, and so, I had to stand up, I didn't have access to a doctor at that particular point, I couldn't get the right paperwork, right? So, individuals who are disabled, at that time, I had to live in public housing, until I found better work. Finally, I eventually made myself up here to Topeka, but it puts me in a position to understand, having been in a wheelchair for real, having, you know, also my hearing issues, I'm not, I speak very well, I've been partially deaf since I was a baby, but the point is that individuals who are disabled generally are on a very limited income. They can't move. Sometimes, they don't have the infrastructure to take care of their space. Maybe they're in a, in a home, maybe they, a home of their own, where maybe they had family supporting them, and that's no longer available, right? Maybe the family doesn't have as much income, you know, maybe there's a vehicle that is a handicapped, accessible vehicle, that maybe is parked on a gravel driveway. Not all areas of the city are pristine paved areas. Now, I'm very lucky, I live in an apartment, I'm able to drive my car, I have a paved area, but my road on Buchanan Street is brick, and it has grass that grows up in it. And if the city street can have grass growing up in it, and the city street isn't mowed and sprayed, how can we expect citizens to do the same to their gravel or permeated areas, especially for those people who are disabled, right? If they can't get out of bed for part of that time, oh, and we expect them to pay for it to somebody, I mean, that might be great, but if they're on a limited income already, or if they're only working part-time, and because they're only working part-time, they make only so much money, but then they can't get assistance, I think we're putting those particular individuals in a strait. I would also like to mention that I heard the concern about, you know, police officers being able to do their jobs, going after criminals, yada, yada. I think something that might be of importance with that is that maybe code enforcement should be a partial division of the Topeka Police Department. So, then when it issues, when a citation is issued, then it can have the Topeka Police Department logo on it. But the idea is, is that if their citizens are not listening, well, let's up the, up the language on the, on the ticket, right? But at the end of the day, this is a civil issue, it's not, these are not people that are planning to be arrested, I hope, you know, it's a fine. So, I just hope you take that into consideration. I don't want people to be harmed by accidental language. I also hope that these particular infractions are ones that are requested by other citizens, that we, if police department's going to be number one on the list, then we're not having police department, the police department going around, you know, at whatever time in their board, they have nothing to do, and they say, oh, that car's parked on the grass, let's cite them, you know, there's, you know, there's, they should be patrolling the area for burglaries, for thefts, for shootings. You know, I live very close by an area where I had that, so it's important to me. Thank you very much for the time, and I will be talking to you later this evening. Thank you.
Additional comments? Or questions from the body at this point in time? Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate the changes that staff made. It makes me feel better that we're generally talking about, or, excuse me, we're exempting driveways from a lot of this. But, you know, Mr. Trammell brought up a great point, and it kind of followed with what Councilwoman Ortiz had said. I hate to ever pass something that's going to criminalize normal behavior, and, you know, I see, you know, having people over for Christmas, because you don't have options, you're, you know, even if you won't be cited, you're still becoming a criminal, if you will. And I hate that. I wonder if there is some sort of exceptions that could be written into this, that when it's an obvious, short-term use, and I, I know we don't like to make up things on the fly here, and I don't mean to beat this dead horse for three or four months, but is there some way we could accomplish something like that, so that people can enjoy their property for its intended use, and yet not be criminalized?
Deputy Mayor.
I know Chief's here, but as I think Councilmember Padilla said, this is not a new ordinance, and this is not their priority. You know, they are not going to go, in fact, we had one car I have dealt with in my area for two months, and I think they gave her, see, he's smiling, it's a little red car, and they gave her, you know, they didn't go walk up and say, here's a ticket, they said, hey, did you even know? No? So, they gave her a warning. I mean, I don't think it's going to be like that. It's already here, it's already happening. And if no one has gone to your house yet and said, ah, people are parked on your, they're not going to. It's just, it's just those few people that try and beat this, the old ordinance. That's all we're doing. I mean, you still can't park on the grass.
And I think that, to Mr. McPherson's point, this wouldn't be an ordinance that, should it be enacted, our police officers are going to be looking for something like that. This would be exactly as you stated, if there's somebody making an abuse of the situation, that, then a neighbor would enact the phone call and say, could you please look into this? And typically, what ends up happening is that the first contact typically is asking a question, do you know what's happening? Do you know this is not legal? What can we do to help you? Because one thing that we have been doing a lot, especially since code is now with neighborhood relations, is figuring out, then if there's no resources for the family, how could we support them to rectify those issues? Which I want to make sure that our community knows, that that is something that we have put a lot of emphasis in recently, of making sure that when we are working with our citizens, if there is some situation that, that doesn't allow them to comply with the law, that we figure out ways with our community partners to ensure that they can be back in compliance.
Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a really good point, and another reason to have the code compliance guys, guys and gals, out on the front line, or at least available, because there are resources for persons with disabilities. We have a good, good set of backup for that, as well as housing things. I think the thought behind that piece was that of all, you know, we're busy making our whole city handicap accessible, and trying to make sure that all the sidewalks are paved, and don't even have a break of more than an inch in them, and of all folks to be parked in the mud and ruts on the grass in front of their house, somebody who's mobility impaired is the last person you'd want to have to suffer through that. So, it was kind of a trade-off there. I would point out, Councilman Emerson, that if we don't pass this, it's all on the books, it's been on the books for 50 years or whatever, so we just wouldn't be improving the language. I do think if somebody, I can see going back and forth on the exception, the language in what city manager sent out to us today about being able to park on grass occasionally for events, I thought was very well-written. If somebody wanted to try and, and put something in, we could, could add it later, if we want to get just this done tonight, or have to be in a big hurry. It could be abused, I suppose. We got some letters from people who want to park all their relatives on the yard every day.
I don't.
So, there would still, I understand. I didn't say you. So, there, somebody's going to have to make a judgment, call, people are doing that a lot, but likely that would, if it really was frequent, you'd end up with the ruts and the grass gone, and it would not be the, the language that was in that piece we got today.
Just a thought.
Councilwoman Ortiz, and then city manager.
Well, thank you. Every time we bring something to the table, people study it and they look at it. And every time they do that, you know, I don't, I don't know how many of you have experienced that there's neighbors that don't like each other, so they use whatever they can to call in on their neighbor. And this is going to be one of those things, and they're going to, I'm just saying, because we've brought up the issue, and it's going to be one of those things, so, you know, I just kind of really struggle with this, because, because I have some people that I wish they would grow up, but they don't like their neighbor, so they just go right down the line, and they just call in their neighbor, and, and, you know, for this, that, or the other, whether it's a, and what they're hearing, and the calls that I've received, is the parking on the grass, period. Nobody has said anything about the gravel or anything, just the parking on the grass and parking in front of your house. That's the complaints I've... That's the complaints I've heard, that's what they're hearing. So that's what they're gonna be looking for whomever to enforce, because we've, we've brought this to the forefront. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, when I look at this, the biggest things that I look at, there are, when it comes to this, it states, um, parking shall mean the standing of a vehicle or machinery on or over a park, paved, or gravelled area, whether occupied or not, other than temporarily for the purpose of loading or unloading property or passengers. So when we look at the exceptions, to just consider exceptions is very difficult to do. Um, it puts a lot of subjectivity to this, and when you're traveling and looking at this type of violation, it creates a lot of sub, subjectivity with regards to exceptions. Um, and then reference the issue of, you know, the language states, in addition to law enforcement officers, property maintenance inspector shall also have the authority to issue a uniform complaint. I would expect that my property code enforcement officers, when they're, if they're happened to be dealing with a particular property, or in a neighborhood, that if they see this going on, that they should be considering this as well. Um, the primary issue is oftentimes, it's, it's an evening affair, and it's something that typically, um, they're told about it, they go to the site, car's not there, then they call back the next night, because, the next day, because the car was there again that night. And so, it's important that we have both sets of, of enforcement capabilities, and so that's why it's written the way it is. Really, this is an attempt to enhance and, and make this language better. When it comes to the issue of, of handicapped, uh, we dealt with a particular location, um, at the beginning of this, over a year ago, where there was a handicap placard on a camper that was parked in the front yard, and up on blocks, and that whole thing just, we had no ability to enforce, because it precluded the, with the handicap sticker on, from doing anything. We couldn't enforce the law related to that it had to be on a surface at all, they could park it on the grass forever, the way it was set up. So we needed to modify that. So, those are some of the changes that we made, in order to make this a much more enforceable, clear ordinance than what we have, and that's what we want.
Thank you. Councilman Hiller.
I found the language from, put my Brendan Jensen hat on, and just pulled on my phone. The, uh, the, I'm not really sure where this comes from, this document that we were sent is called the Topeka Planning Department Standards for Surfaces of Parking, Loading, Vehicular Access, Outdoor Storage and Display Areas. And then somehow, in this chart, sub E of that, whatever it refers to, says that, and that section is designed for low-frequency special events, parentheses, 15 times per year. It identifies that that means festivals, concerts, fairs, and other special events, and defines that the surface needs to be well-established turf, parentheses, 95% perennial vegetative coverage, so that there's definitely something that you're parking on, not just dirt or mud. So, um, that, that's what I had seen, that if there were to be an exception there, that, that didn't seem too bad.
So what is the interest of the body? We need a, either, we have a motion. Mm-hmm, do we have a motion? Mm-hmm. We had a motion in a second, so at this point in time, if there's no further discussion, we would proceed by voting.
Okay, we have, we have eight yes, Ms. Ortiz voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item C, if the clerk would read.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout pertaining to an amendment to the text and map of the Topeka Comprehensive Plan for the Central Park Neighborhood Plan.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're excited to be able to, uh, move forward the Central Park Neighborhood Plan for consideration and approval. If Don Perkins could make his way forward to be able to make a couple comments, um, this is a long process for a neighborhood to get through in order to develop their plan, and so, for us, this is a, an exciting timeframe, as, as this neighborhood identifies the things that it feels are important, and, and charts, of course, for their neighborhood. And so, I'd like Don to be able to talk a little bit about what his neighborhood is looking at doing, and, and they're excited.
My name is Don Perkins, and I've been the Vice President of Central Park for about 15 years. I'm getting too old, I'm getting ready to, uh, transfer out, but I'd like to express my appreciation to the council, and especially to the Planning Department and, uh, the Neighborhood Relations Department. They did an excellent job of communicating to the neighborhood, and working with us on our 20, uh, SART grant, and I really wanna talk to Dan Warner and Brian, uh, usually did a good job. I started out with Bill Feiner, he did an excellent job years ago. I'm just real pleased. Latoya Martinez and Sasha Styles, they did a good job. Monique Clade, she does a good job. We've had an excellent relationship, and they do a good job, and they got all the people involved, and Karen, who's our representative, uh, she's supported us a great deal. I'm really pleased with the city. We've come a long ways, and you've been really supportive of our area, and, uh, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So at this point in time, do we have, uh, Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, with a great deal of pride and pleasure, as you can imagine, I'm happy to move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. In this item, we do need to have ex parte communication disclosure. We do. Is it the next one?
No.
No? Okay, all right, so, if there is no additional comments or questions, I don't think we have anybody else signed up to speak on this item? Nope? Um, there's no comments, we proceed by voting.
Okay, we have seven yes.
Seven having voted yes, the motion passes. They're just not here.
Oh. What happened to them?
They're not here, they're not here. We now proceed to item D, if the clerk would read.
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by section 1850050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, on a 2.1 acre property located at 6017 Southwest 30th Terrace, from C2 Commercial District and O&amp;I2 Office and Institutional District to PUD Plan Unit Development District, C2 Commercial Use Group with other specific limited, limited to self-storage types 1 and 2, and building construction and mechanical contract results.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Planning and Development Director Bill Feiner will go through the details of this requested change to, um, zoning district and creating a PUD. So, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Governor Don. Your Honor, um, the first request is for what we call, um, is from Wannamaker West PUD. We call this a Plan Unit Development. Uh, the actual existing zoning is commercial, a kind of a mid-range commercial, C2. They are requesting, the owner, uh, for a little bit of an upzone, uh, that would require C2, as well as additional, what we consider industrial, by industrial uses, to allow for storage, um, inside storage, as well as potential contractors' offices, and, and associated outside storage with that. So, um, the, the, the issues behind, and there is no, uh, specific development that is intended, this is a bit of a, to help give the property more options. Um, where it's located right now, behind Hy-Vee, uh, off of, uh, 30th, Southwest 30th Terrace, and, uh, west of Wannamaker there, is a very difficult to, um, market for, whether it's office or retail development. So, adding a few more options, uh, is a good thing, uh, to help market the property, as long as we have some conditions, which is part of the PUD, to help soften and screen any potential storage, um, impacts, uh, along that street. So, um, we've addressed that through the PUD, the Planning Commission has recommended approval, um, unanimously, so I'll stand for any questions at this point.
Deputy Mayor.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by, the Deputy Mayor, we have a second by Councilmember Lesher. At this point in time, uh, I would like to talk about the ex parte communication. As you all know, um, we are acting as a quasi-judicial, uh, body at this point in time, and if anybody in the, in the council has received any sort of information that would, um, have the possibility of swaying your vote, this is your time to disclose it, and not only to disclose that, but also to indicate that you are able to make an impartial vote in this matter. Seeing no one, um, at this, is there any information that you've received that would sway your vote, and can you make an impartial vote?
No. Yes, I have. I've not received any information I can make.
Okay, so seeing none at this point in time, um, we have a motion in a second, and if there is no further discussion on this item, we proceed by voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item E, if the clerk would read.
E is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by section 1850050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 2200 Southeast Powell Street, from O&amp;I2 Office and Institutional Dwelling District to C2 Commercial District.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll let Director Feiner cover the details on this one.
Thank you. Um, so, we are, uh, having a request here at the corner of Southeast Powell and Southeast 29th Street, the northeast corner, by Milk and Honey Coffee Company. The site is a former bank, uh, many of you probably have driven by that, and noticed it's been vacant for the last three years. Um, so this, uh, proposal would change the zoning from an office zoning, uh, for the bank, and allow, again, kinda like the last one, allow more flexibility with commercial retail uses, as the name indicates, the, there is actually a development that comes along with this one, uh, potential for a drive-through coffee shop. But, this is not a PUD, there's no specific conditions, this is what we call straight zoning, so it is being requested for C2, which is our mid-level commercial neighborhood, um, zoning, to allow retail, neighborhood retail types of uses, and, um, it also, uh, helps to address the, the vacancy that has been on here for the last few years. Um, we keep the transition going into the neighborhood from the Dillons and the more intensive commercial to the west there, you still have some office transitioning into the neighborhood. We did not receive, had neighborhood information meeting, Planning Commission meeting, we did not receive any, um, opposition or concerns from the neighbors, ultimately, so with that, I'll, uh, Planning Commission recommended unanimously approval for the request. I'll stand for any questions.
Deputy Mayor.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, for approval by the Deputy Mayor, we have a second by Councilman Jensen. At this point in time, it is my duty to indicate that, yet again, this is another area in which we are acting as a quasi-judicial body, and that at this point in time, as stated previously, it is time for us to disclose if we have received information pro or against this item, and that we are able to make a vote on this matter impartially. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have talked to several people about this, but I can make an impartial decision.
Councilman, uh, Emerson?
The same, Mayor.
Councilman Padilla?
Same.
Seeing none others, at this point in time, do we have additional discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, we proceed by voting. Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't wanna say it before, uh, central setting, in that way, I didn't wanna say it before, but I did wanna thank Chris and Darlene, the owners of this. Uh, it was really, to me, like a textbook example of how these things should be done. They not only had the neighborhood meeting that are, are planning, um, has, has people do now, but they also came to several NIAs, as well as going out to all the neighbors, so, uh, it was fantastic. I appreciate your investment in, uh, East Topeka, in Highland Park specifically. I look forward to having some coffee there. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the non-action items. Item A, if the clerk would read.
Is discussion of funding recommendations by Topeka Shawnee County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Advisory Council in the amount of $626,000 from the 2020 Special Alcohol Fund.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, if Max Wilson could make his way forward, Max is still the Chair of the Drug and Abuse and, excuse me, the Topeka Shawnee County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Advisory Council, and he'll review the recommendations that they made for the grants related to the Special Alcohol Fund.
Thank you. Uh, I guess I'm gonna have to die to get out of this position. I've been doing it for many, many years. Um, the alcohol, I am the, the grant review chair of the Alcohol and Drug Council, and uh, as you all probably know, that it's applicable by the drug taxes, and it's mandated by the state to, a portion of that fund be distributed to, uh, programs that have a specific purpose of reduction or treatment of alcohol and drug funds. We did review, I believe there's nine applications here, we had a, kind of an aberration back historically, see, I can talk historically, because I'm, I'm an old guy. And, uh, once in a while, once in about three or four years, uh, in about every three or four years, there are excess applicable by the drug tax dollars in, in, uh, comparison to the request, or, or traditional funding, and I don't know what the purpose, what the cause of that is, I suspect that it has to do with enforcement of the tax issue, maybe up one year and down the next. Uh, this year, it was like, uh, compared to last year, it was $56,000 more this year for 2020 than less than this current year. Uh, we've had previous years that it was this way, and I think it has to do also, maybe with the city having reserve, a definite amount of reserve funds for cash flow purposes, and that may fluctuate year to year, and once they reach the threshold, they can add more money. That's my layman, layperson's, uh, uh, opinion of this. Uh, it's subject to correction, uh, if you want to do that. Anyway, the programs we, we determined are going to recommend funding for is Boys' Girls' Club. By the way, we have a bunch of folks here, I better get them to stand before they leave. We have all the folks that are, that have grants, uh, uh, from this funding source, would you stand, please? Come on, Sister Wilson. And AJ, very good, thank you. Uh, Boys' Girls' Club, Smart Moves, teen, at the Teen Center, requested $11,000, recommendations $11,000. We had enough money to fund everybody at their requested level, which is just astounding. Uh, PAR's Prevention Programs, $173,000, PAR's Evaluation Intervention, $58,183. Third Judicial District Drug Treatment Court, $43,000. All those funds go absolutely to follow the client into treatment and help pay for treatment. It's not, it's not used for administrative purposes. KCSL Drug Endangered Children Program, $14,000, Balaio's Social Detox, one or two, I think, in the state, $285,275. And then something that's exceptional, and we used to do this historically when we had extra money, uh, we're, we're wanting to do, uh, to set aside some money for mini-grants, I've got this right here, uh, for 2020, uh, fifty, uh, $41,542, uh, to fund Recovery Month Mini Grants, $6,000, Capital Improvement Grants, $30,000, and a Grant Workshop, there'll actually be two workshops, for $1,500. And the fiscal agent for this will be, uh, Prevention Recovery Services, they'll have a fiscal agent fee of $4,042, for a little less than 10%. They will, uh, they will make the accommodations and the arrangements for the workshops, uh, and for the mini- mini-grant distribution, which will go to the city for that fee, and also provide materials, printed materials. Capital Improvement Grants have been, historically been used for building maintenance, building improvements, conference room tables and chairs, carpet, roofing, photocopiers, those kinds of things. So if there's any questions, the aberration is the mini-grants, capital improvements and workshop. Rest of it's fairly standard. It's a nice opportunity.
Well, thank you so much for the report. As you know, this is a non-action item, so it is presented for us this week, and we will come back and approve it next week. Therefore, if you have any questions for Max with regards to the mini-grants, the potential capital projects, you have the chance to just get a hold of him, and he could give you further information. Councilman Heller.
Just a clarification. The language up here talks about this being the Topeka Shawnee County Advisory Council and that the money is coming to the Board of County Commissioners. So if you can refresh for me.
Sure.
This is supposed to be voted on by both bodies?
Right.
Is that it?
I think the county money was $50,000 this year. It was down somewhat. There's very few liquor-by-the-drink establishments outside of the city limits, for one thing. So the taxes are much less coming in from the county. But the statute said it was set up, it's a really old language in the statute. It uses words like alcoholic and drug addicts and things like that. We don't ever say that anymore. We have disorders, alcohol and drug disorders, not addicts or alcoholics.
Well, you can work on that.
So we're using old, we're dealing with old language here.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. We've been talking about social service funding and how it's processed, and we're about to talk about what we vote on and what we don't. And so I wanted to check. So that answers my question.
I think originally, it was, the statute was set up for, to have Alcohol and Drug Councils review grants and do, basically try to organize liquor-by-the-drink or Alcohol and Drug Programs Prevention and Treatment Services, a coordinating body. And I think it was originally, I think the money flowed to the county and then to the city. So from the Department of Revenue, that comes to Department of Revenue. Yet beyond that, I'm really stretching. Any questions? I'll be back next week. Lord willing and all, still be alive.
Yes, God willing, you will. Thank you so much, Max. We appreciate your service to our community. We now move on to item B. If the clerk would read.
B is an update on the 2020-2022 stages of resource target area for future federal and city funding.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Monique Claude will come forward from Neighborhood Relations Department and give us a summary of the SORTT target area progress of program this year. Monique.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, government body. This evening, I'm going to provide you with a very summarized update on the 2020-2022 SORTT program. It has been a staple program for the last 15 years in the Department of Neighborhood Relations. Several neighborhood improvement associations have benefited from the program. Neighborhoods are selected through a scoring process and have to meet a certain criteria. The overall intent of the program is to revitalize and empower neighborhoods that experience blight and are disproportionately impacted. Up to $1.7 million will be proposed for capital improvements in the target area from 2021 through the 2022, during the 2020 CIP-CIB process. In addition, $330,000 of the Community Development Block Grant, otherwise known as CDBG funds, will be dedicated to housing rehabilitation in the target areas in the 2021 and 2022 Consolidated Annual Action Plan. The SORTT program process is as follows. Applications were provided to all of the 21 NIAs in March and were due on August the 2nd. The selection process was determined by the Citizens Advisory Council vote, which took place on September the 4th, and we're excited to announce that the East Topeka North NIA was selected as a targeted area. Next steps consist of planning Public Works, Department of Neighborhood Relations, and various departments will meet with the East Topeka North NIA Neighborhood to begin planning discussions. Public Works will then initiate infrastructure projects. DNR will begin housing rehabilitation projects, and the Division of Community Engagement will work with the NIA on community building in hopes that it will have a lasting impact on their neighbors to accompany the infrastructure activities in the neighborhood. We are excited to begin a partnership with East Topeka North Neighborhood Improvement Association utilizing the SORTT program. I stand before you for any questions.
Any questions for Monique? Councilwoman Heller.
I don't know that I have questions for Monique, but maybe for the city manager.
Sure.
So.
Absolutely.
I think that this is, the process has gone well and the selection's gone well, so don't have any questions about that, although city manager and I have talked about it. We've voted on these in the past, and I'm not sure I think we should change that. But my question is, is the SORTT program going to be reviewed as part of the housing study?
The program itself will not be. The types of housing that are addressed by the program related to rehabilitation of homes is part of what will be addressed. Housing study will look at the housing stock to determine its quality, et cetera, in order to be able to determine what neighborhoods might need certain types of housing and what their quality of housing is in that area and what we would look at for a target. From that, it might necessitate some consideration of changes as to how we would allocate funding related to SORTT. So in other words, the SORTT program isn't studied, but what types of housing would be addressed by SORTT in the future would be something that, based on the housing study results and information, would help guide us as we go forward in how we do the SORTT program.
If I may, I would certainly like to encourage it. My sense is that the company that we have engaged has a pretty broad capability in terms of analysis and recommendations for us. I might be wrong on that, but I go back far enough to when, it's been, what, about 20 years since the SORTT program started? And if I'm correct, the reason we chose to do that was to, and I'm not being critical about it, we have rolled out that program the way, the way it was structured.
Yes, Your Honor.
If I'm correct, we, I think we're a little thin on outcomes in a whole lot of things that we're doing in the city, and I know we're working on that. But if I remember correctly, our goals would have been, for instance, that tax values would go up, that crime would go down, that the neighborhood engagement would improve before and through the process of the SORTT program. We have not really seen that happen. And all the improvements that have happened have been with government money. We didn't really identify that it should be different than that. So again, it's not critical of the program as it's rolled out, but I would suggest that so many things are working really well, but something that I thought of is to, is to switch it up a little bit and have the neighborhoods on a rotation for their neighborhood plans. Right now, they don't get their neighborhood plan done until they've already been picked for SORTT, which means that you get picked without necessarily having gone through what you need first. And if the neighborhoods were on a rotating planning process, then, and they could apply for SORTT whenever, either with their refreshed plan or with whatever they think would be the plan, an element of the plan or an update that they would suggest, like we all do with anything else. I think we would see an increase in self-help. I think we would see an increasing engagement in the community before they even apply. Could even be a requirement. We would see, or it could be built in that way, we would see an increase in looking for private sources of funding, not just going after government funding. And then stronger neighborhoods, the money could be the same, but I think there are ways that we could, that we should look at restructuring the, or just consider it anyway. And I thought of the housing study as an opportunity with some experts around that might be able to help.
So I do want to make a few statements based on your feedback. I appreciate the comments. However, I think that it's really important for us to know that the families that are benefiting from this program are families that are extremely low income. And it's one of the few programs that we have in our community that are able to support and give a hand up to residents that are unable to maybe do all of the work and maybe come up with some sort of money in order for them to do so. So I think that maybe a sweat equity type of model would be something that we could kind of consider, but I think that as we are revamping this program, it may have not given us the complete outcomes that we might have wanted, but it has helped us revitalize some neighborhoods, and it has helped us bring pride back to some of those, I could tell you in your own district, I remember in.
My own district.
Exactly. There have been several of them, and the individuals that are benefiting because they are living in close proximity to the homes that get rehabbed are extremely happy with the result. And it's just one of those things that we are able to help our families that are in the most need to maybe have an alternative to repair their homes. Memory serves me right, and I don't know if this is still one of the issues that we have, one of the biggest problems that we had in awarding these grants was the fact that a lot of the citizens that were able to participate in the program and that wanted to participate in the program because of their financial struggles had bills with the city that had to be repaid in full before they could receive the benefit. And even though we put a service in place to support these families, we were also the people holding up those families and receiving the support and the services that they needed and that they deserved. So if there's anything for us to reevaluate with this grant, I would really implore for us to look for a solution that, that would maybe work on something with a family that if they are going to receive the services, that we could work with them on a payment plan or some sort of way that they could repay back the debts that they have to the community. Because if you really think about it, us going in and using the federal dollars that are supposed to be used to rehab these houses and giving these families the empowerment could also be a benefit for us to say, because we're going to get, those taxes are going to increase in that property. So eventually, the money that is owed to the city is going to be paid back one way or another. So if we could work maybe with those citizens, that their barrier is the bills that they owe to our community, then maybe we could have a program that is much more successful and see the outcomes that both you and I would like to see.
Both. I mean, I live in Tennesseetown. They were the recipient this year, and when the city, you know, they did the pre-program, for instance, and the city was there offering the city's program, which they had to march up and down the street to try and get people engaged with. And then when Habitat said, just come talk to us about doing some painting and some repairs, everybody was in line in front of Habitat. And so it's not a good or a bad thing. It just seems like after this time, I remember and shared it here, being really floored to find out that the property tax values had not increased in much of any of our neighborhoods that we'd invested so much in. And I want us to do that kind of exploration to say, okay, what happened? Was it just not going to happen anyway? Or are there some ways that we could structure this program a little bit differently? Again, not being critical at all of what, of today, but it's just, it's time after 20 years to say, what have we accomplished? And go from there. That's all.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Additional comments or questions? Monique, thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome. Unfortunately, you have to see me again. I apologize.
Yeah. That is not unfortunate. We now go to item C. If the clerk would read.
C is an update on the 2020 Neighborhood Empowerment Grants.
So thank you for the opportunity again. This evening, I'm going to provide you with a brief update on the 2020 Empowerment Grant. Neighborhood improvement grants are used to support a variety of neighborhood design, public facility projects, and community engagement activities in primarily low to moderate income neighborhoods. The Department of Neighborhood Relations has allocated up to $137,890 in CDBG funds in 2020 for projects in designated Neighborhood Improvement Association neighborhoods. The 2020 Empowerment Grant Review Committee consisted of four community partners and three City of Topeka staff members. The allocations of the CDB funds were awarded to seven projects in Central Highland Park, Historic North Topeka East, North Topeka West, Oakland, and Ward Need Neighborhood Improvement Associations in 2020. And if you'd allow me just to share, $12,384 was awarded to Central Highland Park for an ADA accessible playground equipment at Highland Park Central Elementary. $1,800 was awarded to Historic North Topeka East for Little Russia Banner. $25,000 is awarded to Historic North Topeka East for signalized pedestrian crossing at North Kansas Avenue and Gordon Street. $6,225 was awarded to North Topeka West for a banner project. $29,050 was awarded to Oakland Little Lac Center Beautification and Repair Project. $21,890 was awarded for an Oakland Student Walkway at the 500 block of Sumner. And $10,000 was awarded to Ward Need for an exterior lighting assessment. I'd like to bring to your attention that the 2020 CDBG funding is contingent upon final federal appropriations. However, these funds have been reserved for the Empowerment Grant Program as part of the 2020 Consolidated Annual Action Plan. The Department of Neighborhood Relations is excited to be able to work with these neighborhoods to implement the empowerment grant projects. And I stand before you for any questions.
Questions or comments for Monique on this issue? Councilman Emerson.
Ms. Claude, thank you for, thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
I did have a question, and I apologize, I didn't see this earlier. I would ask you this before tonight.
No problem.
It's maybe my only chance.
Sure.
I apologize. But the Central Highland Park, I see like the ADA adaptive playground, it got the highest score, but yet it got, it didn't get fully funded. Can you just explain how that works?
And if you don't mind, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to refer to Latoya Burnett Martinez, who's actually our project manager.
Latoya, may I ask you to come forward, please? Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Emerson. So the funding allocations are based on the recommendations by the review committee. And so the review committee, upon reviewing the application and the information provided by the NIA for this application process, felt that the funding for the ADA accessible equipment was a supplement because the school is also providing a partial half of that funding for that grant as well.
So thank you for that. So the entire amount, so in other words, they didn't need the 24/7/68, the school was making up the difference?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Wonderful. If there's no additional comments or questions, thank you, ladies, for your presentation.
Thank you.
We move on to item D. If the clerk would read.
D is discussion of an ordinance concerning hazardous material and civil emergencies.
Mayor, tonight, we have Fire Chief Duke here to go through a proposal that will address changes to our hazardous material and civil emergencies related to how we handle those and the process related to the expenses that we incur as we deal with these types of incidences in the community. Chief Duke?
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, council members, I was here the last time they spoke about the hazardous materials responses in our jurisdiction and did note that Councilman Cohen was at that meeting, and obviously, there's a lot of products that flow through our city over roads, railroads, and the like, and that are stored in our community at industrial areas. So when I first came to Topeka, one of the things I first saw was we had a regional response team, but, you know, we were reimbursed with the materials and man-hours used in responses by the State Farm Marshal's Office, but there are responses within our community that is not a state response. It's basically a city response. And after speaking with legal Ms. Catherine Walters, we saw the language in our current ordinance didn't line up with what the state in House Bill 2119 had, where we could seek reimbursement from others. So we were working on it through 2018, and then we had the issue with the personnel code, and we had to step back because there was a lot of language in some of the personnel codes that were in some of these ordinances, and they had to clean it up. So after the personnel code was passed just a week or two ago, that's when we were able to bring this back up again, where we were in line with the personnel code plus working with the State Farm Marshal in our responses. So I'm going to go to, if I may need instructional here on this here to get my document up. You do have in front. You do have in front of you, hopefully, the document, the ordinance that we are bringing forth to you this evening. And I did highlight there, besides where the language has been struck out, the new language, I think, is highlighted on here. There we go. So that's where we have changed the language, more in line to go with not only the personnel code, but also to go in line with the state, the bill that allows us to collect funds for these special responses within the city. And that would include not only hazardous materials, it could be technical rescue like trench collapses, high-angle rescues, or swift water rescues as well. That's what the state allows us to be able to ask for reimbursement for those special incidents. So if I... I'm not too sure if you all read this, but this language now allows us to step up and to go to either personnel persons or their insurance company or small companies or whatever to seek reimbursement for those special equipment and that we utilize and other stuff, the disposables. We did have, shortly after I came on here, we did have an incident in a salvage yard where they had a fire and a leakage of oil, and our first response was to put out the fire and also to mitigate it where those oils that hazardous materials was not going to flow into the local streams, causing an issue there, not only with their water system, but also maybe with the environment. So as we go through this, obviously, I said it's going to coincide with the state and how we are going in with them. So if you have any questions on this particular code or any of these changes in there, they do reflect everything needed for us to do so. Should we get reimbursement for calls that we go to? There is one in blue. I've just came up on this. It's got more to do with emergency management, and this was changed just to reflect what we fall under in Shawnee County Emergency Management and their definition of a disaster. So we coincide with the state. We're both working all disasters together on this. So I stand for any questions on this subject.
Chief, I think that you answered my question. My... One of my biggest questions was going to be, had we coordinated with emergency management to ensure that we were lockstep in them? And you just answered that.
Yes.
So thank you so much for that.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief told me, he said, "This is what you talked to us about before." I am thrilled to see this. My first introduction to this issue at all was from a colleague of Mike Lesser's. I think I met Mike the first time or saw that gentleman in person, you know, some years ago now, and it's a citizen who just was concerned that we weren't collecting the money that we could. Two questions. Will this cover all cleanups? Are car wrecks, you know, you all come out and clean up the oil and the things like that, too?
On motor vehicle accident, it's our normal response. There has to be a certain amount. You know, the EPA regulates, you know, when they need to be notified to the amounts and the type of products that maybe need cleaned up and how we clean it up. It's us using our specialized equipment and disposables to either stop the product getting into our water source, or it's become a health hazard or a hazard in itself where we had a polymer that a truck overturned about a year and a half ago on I-70 right at 10th Street. It basically wasn't a hazardous material, but it became a hazardous situation because it was so slick on the highway. We had to clean it up and try to stop it getting in within our water system. That was something that would have helped us go after and for the cleanup of that and the materials that we used.
But I assume the reason you're coming out for every single wreck is because we don't want that stuff on the highway or on the road for danger.
Correct. That's a hazardous condition.
Correct. So my question then is, because I think that individual citizen that got hold of me, it was even before your time, was why aren't we billing people's insurance? We could collect on the time and effort that the fire department puts in on almost anything once you look at the responsible parties, and so...
If we respond on a normal motor vehicle accident, the only time that we would look for any reimbursement if we use specialty cleanup to try to stop the oils or fluids getting into our water system, but there's no charge for responding to the accident itself. It's just if we have to do a cleanup of any hazardous materials spilled on the streets or the roads. We would be able to do that.
Okay.
And that's following the state program as well. The state says you can't... If you respond to a motor vehicle accident, you just can't charge them. It's only if we start using our specialized materials and equipment. And that would be the hazardous material, T-MR, this absorbent that we would use to clean up a spill, we could charge for that.
Okay. I mean, pretty much anything is a spill, I mean, besides you sweeping up the bumpers and things like that.
Right. That's... Yeah.
That wouldn't count, but if there's a spill, any...
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question is, will the dollar figures that you're calculating be what I call fully loaded? We've had some state reimbursement programs where it was really stripped down in terms of what you could bill. Does this allow us to take, you know, if a firefighter is... Makes $20 an hour, but it actually costs us $70 an hour to have that firefighter standing on that corner?
We would follow the same as the State Fire Marshal's Office. They use FEMA reimbursement levels, and that is pretty much in line of how that would go. We would look who was working, how much they were making an hour. The vehicle would be allotted a certain amount of money if we were forced to have... Forced to clean up after the accident. We could do that. There is the FEMA gives us the chance to get reimbursement for the equipment, the materials, and the manpower and the length of time that they're there.
Well, the FEMA rate is the one that's really low, because that's what we can... We can bill FEMA after, for instance, a snow incident. And those are... And that's not you, but that's the Public Works Department, and their rates are really, really stripped down and low. Maybe this is a question for legal, because I understand that you can do the minimal rate and a bill rate to calculate, but if we were turning into somebody's insurance, I would sure want us to go the fully loaded rate so that we got our true cost back to the city. I... Question would be for legal, maybe, whether this language would prohibit that or whether you feel that the state or county authority would prohibit that.
If we use the same FEMA line as the State Fire Marshal does, we would garner back our response costs, we would, because they, for the first RFA fire apparatus showing up on the scene, if they are called in, it's about $500. And then each person's salary is taken out of the length of time that they're on the scene, their per-hour rate, and that is charged to the... Those that are responsible for the spillage.
But is the per-hour rate their dollar... Their dollar per hour rate?
It is the city's fire department's rate. That's on the state.
Yes. Councilwoman Hiller, the stat... The ordinance is written to read compensation of employees for the time and efforts devoted specifically to the emergency action. So that is, I would say, it's probably capable of a broader...
Mm-hmm.
...reading. So we would just have to test it if we tried to...
Well, I hope that we would administratively do that, because if somebody's on the scene for 30 minutes, but it took them a half hour to get ready and get out there, and a half hour to get back, and then an hour to clean up all their equipment, it really cost us four hours, let's say. And if it really... Because the supervisor had to be out there with them and all that, it's easily more than $100 an hour for people with your equipment and what you've got just for the time, much less the product that gets used at the time. And I just want to make sure administratively that... Certainly, policy-wise, we want to have this framework, but that administratively, we're spending that time and billing for as much money as we can get.
Right. That's great. And that's what we're looking to do so we can recoup our cost for replacing our equipment or the materials that we use for the cleanup.
Exactly.
And the man-hours that we were on that scene and the apparatus that was on that scene.
But all that prep time and all that adds in. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Robertson, I was just wondering, in this... In this, like, line 103, it's on page five of it. It says promptly after completion of the emergency action, the staff's department shall certify those expenses to the appropriate, so on and so forth. Then it says, and shall request that legal counsel bring a civil action for recovery. And then it goes on to say, not less than 30 days before filing a civil action, legal counsel shall submit, should bill them. And I just... I just wonder, do we mean prepare a civil action instead of bring? It almost seems like we're going to... We're going to immediately file a civil action with the word "bring," I guess leads me to...
Catherine, do you want me to... Do you know that answer? I... Councilwoman Emerson, in my opinion, I think it says, "We'll bring a legal action," but I think that just means, in my opinion, it would be as we see fit. I don't think it's going to require that we do it. And it also does provide for, before you do that, to reach out and informally attempt to resolve the matter.
Yeah.
Before all the...
Thank you for that clarification. It just seems like it's saying, we will file, you know, we will bring this action, and then later on, it says, "But before we do that," I just... I don't know if that's what you meant, I guess, or not, but just look at that, please.
Yeah, that is existing.
That's... Okay.
Doesn't mean... Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like we're going to, you know, the day after the accident, you get a lawsuit in the mail. So, thank you.
That's a great question. We do have somebody sign up to speak on this issue. If we could allow Mr. Torey McPherson to come up.
At first, Madam Mayor, Council, I was going to waive this, but noticing your discussion, I ended up reading the rest of that paragraph, and it explains that there's a 30-day period, and then they end up filing that. It's just like any other debt collection, which I used to do that at one point. So now we know. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions for Chief? Seeing none. Chief, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
We now move on to item E. Actually, before we move on to item E, it's 8 o'clock, and it's the usual and customary five-minute break for the governing body. So if everybody would be okay, we're going to recess into a five-minute, no more than 10-minute break. Just come back judiciously, and then we'll just reconvene the meeting. Okay? All right.